We're in at seven o'clock. We'll call this October 3, first city council meeting in order. Our first order of business is our invocation. We have Pastor Andy Stovall with the British Church here to do our church, I mean do our prayer, and then after that, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Stovall?
How are you, sir?
Thank you for doing this.
Everyone please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Father God, we just bow before you tonight, Lord. Thank you for your sovereignty in this world. We thank you, God, for the opportunity that you give us to serve. And I pray, Lord, as this session comes to order tonight, that you, God, would order our steps. Thank you, Lord, as we lead in integrity, God, and we lead to honor you, that you would just bless our endeavors, God, give us unity, and help us move forward for the betterment of our community and this great city. Lord, we give you all the glory and honor and praise for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Need to hit roll call?
Here.
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 President.
Here.
Here.
All right, we're all here. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 19, 2019, for adoption.
Move to adopt the minutes from the work session and regular meeting of August 19. Can I do the second one also?
No, let's do the one at the time, okay? Second. Any discussion? All favor raise your right hand, pose light lines, motion carries. All right, the next one we have is the work session regular meeting of September 9, 2019.
Move to adopt the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of September 9, 2019.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All favor raise your right hand, pose light lines, minister approved. All right, next on the presentations, item B is Employee Performance Award, Human Resources?
I got it, sir. So, as we continue to strive to set the standard for public service in North Carolina, I wanted our people to set a quarterly award for the employee of the quarter and our supervisor of the quarter. So, I'd like to thank the mayor for offering his, part of his salary in his star award to fund this. We're giving $500 checks to each of these individuals. And I would like to call Rick Fretcher up, along with Jeremy Bryant, for the employee of the quarter.
Good evening, sir.
Can I present it to Mike there so people can hear?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll be up after you get here.
This team was absolutely no surprise to me. Jeremy's part of my team out of public works, and when they said he gets selected as the employee of the quarter, like I said, no surprise at all. His attitude, positive attitude all the time, his work ethic, his talent, his skill set, above approach. He takes everything he does with a sense of pride, ownership. Very proud to have him part of my team. He's one of those teammates that if you lost him, you'd be hard pressed to replace him. You know, the top 10% of employees, I mean, to go away, it's difficult. And he's one of those. We hope to have him around for a long time. With that, I'll lead into, I guess, the certification, present the award. This is the certify, if you don't mind me reading this, it's a lot. Certified Employee of the Quarter Award has been awarded to Jeremy Bryant for outstanding achievement, 1 July 2019 through 30 September 2019. So, his accomplishments, or the list of his accomplishments, go through those. Jeremy Bryant distinguished himself as outstanding achievement, distinguished himself outstanding achievement as a city welder from 1 July to 30 September 2019. During this period, Jeremy's dedication, talent, ingenuity, and ingenuity enabled him to work through and resolve several issues, saving countless man-hours and thousands of dollars. When a steel access panel in the middle of Grantham Street recently failed, causing a major safety hazard and partial road closure, Jeremy stepped up to the challenge and custom-made four individual reinforcement steel panels, phasing in the replacement so we didn't have to shut down the road, so we kept that process open throughout the entire process. Another issue Jeremy helped resolve involved modifying seven leaf collector machines. After purchasing and replacing several backing plate assemblies that costed $1,400 apiece, he was able to identify and notice similarities in the way they were failing and a weakness in the plate itself. He designed and fabricated the cover plate for only $40 to reinforce and protect the face of the backing plate. His ingenuity extended the life of the backing plates, reduced equipment downtime, and saved a thousand, and he saved $1,360 on each repair, including all future repairs. And we typically replace seven or eight of those a year during leaf season. So, it's a big deal for us as well. Jeremy also supports the community by training students participating in the WorkSource East Vocational Training Internship Program. After students complete their classroom training, he guides them through hands-on, the hands-on aspects of welding, affording them the opportunity to get practical experience and fine-tune their skills to better compete for jobs as they leave that program. He's an invested and committed to team player who assesses every task and ensures it's accomplished to the best of his ability, no matter how small, and I can attest to that. His accomplishments reflect well upon himself and the city of Goldsboro as a whole. He's told me more than once, I go back from time to time, if his name's going on it, it's going to be done right. So, congratulations.
I appreciate it. So, we have, that's all printed out here for him, along with the check. So, Mayor and I would like to, again, congratulate you personally on your job well done and take a picture if we can get that.
Thank you.
Come on, Ricky. You gotta like take pictures. You gotta, you gotta get yours smiling.
All right, thank you.
Oh, 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 oh. You can come up, you can come up, man.
I'm about, I'm about right here.
You must have one of my phone alarms.
I do.
All right, you want to say anything?
No, I appreciate it. I really do, you know, I love my job and I try, I try my best every time I do something. You know?
You save us money every day.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. Mike Wagner up here to speak about Don McMullen as our supervisor.
Well, now, I'm getting on up here, but I'm going to talk about Don this evening. So, I'm Mike Wagner, I'm Public Utilities Director. Don is the collections and distribution superintendent for the city of Goldsboro. Supervises around a crew of 10, and they are responsible for all the underground infrastructure within the city of Goldsboro. So, approximately 240 miles of water distribution line and 250 miles of sanitary sewer line. Don's job is, also includes, you know, backflow preventers and fire hydrants and all different things. He and his staff work tirelessly 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, responding to different emergencies, trying to be proactive, keep our citizens and our water quality safe. So, I'm going to read through the award for Don and his supervisor of the quarter. It's been awarded to Don McMullen, the collection, distribution and collection superintendent for outstanding achievement from July 1, 2019 through September 30, 2019. John McMullen distinguished himself by outstanding achievement as a city distribution and collection system superintendent from July 1 to September 30, 2019. During this period, Don acted honestly, morally, ethically, and reliably to serve and represent our community exceptionally well. Don and his teams are arguably five staff short in collections and five staff short in distribution, being 10, 10 staff total for benchmarking standards in North Carolina. Nonetheless, they successfully dealt with the challenges of the city's aging underground infrastructure 24 hours a day, responding to water main breaks and sanitary sewer spills on pipes that could be approximately 100 years old. Repair work examples included a 20-inch sanitary sewer outfall from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, the sewer line behind the Waynesboro Park, it's a 15-inch sewer line. There was another 15-inch sewer line behind Norwood and Woodgrove Street, and the 12-inch water transmission line that blew on George Ave. Don notified the proper state and local authorities to ensure proper repairs were made to protect the citizens of Goldsboro and the environment. He is an invested and committed team leader who assesses every task to ensure compliance in the collections and distribution system. Accompliments reflect well upon himself in the city of Goldsboro.
Picture with you here?
You got your family that wants to take a picture?
She got, she got, she got.
One up.
Take a picture with her?
No.
All right. All right. So, next on our agenda is the resolution expressing appreciation for service rendered by Ezekiel Jones as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than 18 years. This is Resolution 2019-90. Whereas Ezekiel Jones retired on August 1, 2019, as a fire engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 18 years of service. He began his career on April 4, 2001, as a firefighter with the fire department and with the city of Goldsboro. On April 1, 2015, he was promoted to fire engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department, where he has served until his retirement. He has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant, who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. The mayor, the city council, the city of Goldsboro, all desires on behalf of ourselves, the city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Ezekiel Jones their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro on call it number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Ezekiel's tenure with the city of Goldsboro, and we offer him our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution should be incorporated in official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the 21st date of October 2019. Offer this for adoption.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All favor raise your right hand. Where is he? There he is, way right there. Chief, I know you've got something you want to say.
Yes, sir.
Come on up here to the podium.
I was giving him his moment, you and him both.
Well, you can be in the picture.
Okay, thank you. Well, certainly, um, we appreciate the service Mr. Jones provided to the citizens and business to the city of Goldsboro, and he did it with, you know, the man talked about distinction and all those type of things. He's the type of fool, you see, he's not a small man, you know, so, but he had the brain and the brunt, but he also always was such a wonderful attitude, and I only had the opportunity and the pleasure to work with him for a little over a year because he's about 60 years old. He wanted, he looks young for the time, no, I'm a 20. But, you know, we certainly appreciate the person that he was, the employee that he was, and certainly now I can call him a friend. So, we thank you for it, sir. And we actually have some other things that we do you.
You want to speak?
No, I'll let you go.
Go ahead. Get in the room. Yeah, we'll get a picture. Chief? Come on. What are you looking at?
I was waiting, I thought I'd tweet you, man. Okay, she's going to sit. Okay, all right.
Chief, it's a work by our operation. You want to get a picture with any of your family, anybody else? You sure?
Yes, sir.
We're getting real views now.
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah.
This is a, uh, plaque that we have to notify your service, and I'll read it out. You can read it out for sure. And then the other plaque that Chief Lancaster has was a, is the gift from your coworkers up there.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Make sure you're smiling, too.
Make sure y'all are smiling, please.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here for the disability employment awareness? Okay, good. We're going to read it first, and then we'll let y'all come up and get it, okay? Our next is the National Disability Employment Awareness Proclamation. Whereas workplaces that welcome the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of building an inclusive community and a strong economy. Workplace must prosper when all residents are guaranteed the skills, education, opportunities they need for success in the jobs of today and tomorrow. And it is estimated that 1 in 5 of North Carolinians will require a disability during their lifetime. Issued earlier this year, Executive Order Number 92, Employment First for North Carolinians with Disabilities, establishes North Carolina as an employment-first state to increase opportunities for meaningful employment, fair wages, and career advancement for people with disabilities, and directs the Office of State Human Resources to transform state government into a model employer of people with disabilities. In collaboration with the valued partners in the public and private sectors, the North Carolina Division of Vocational Rehabilitation and Rehabilitation Services, as part of the Department of Health and Human Services, helps North Carolinians with disabilities excel in their chosen careers, earn competitive wages and benefits, and positively impact their employers, communities, and the state's economy. The purpose of Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate employers about the value that people with disabilities can and do bring to the workforce, and the variety of resources available to help employers retain and advance qualified, talented workers with disabilities. The United States Department of Labor's theme for National Disability Employment Awareness Month 2019, "The Right Talent Right Now," calls attention to the untapped labor pool of qualified, job-ready people with disabilities. Therefore, I check out the mayor's city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. So, I offer that for, well, it's supposed to make sure it had to be adopted, right? Okay, so, we're there. Come on up. We have you like a official, just do frame and everything. There we go. You get in the middle, you can make us look better. All right. All right. All right. All right. Are you smiling? How'd you get up here to take a picture?
I was really working for a minute.
Y'all want to say anything?
Well, Mayor, City Council, and all of you here today, on behalf of vocational rehabilitation, the Goldsboro office, we want to say thank you for this proclamation as we prepare this month to celebrate consumers and celebrate community. So, again, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate it.
We thank y'all for each other. I think we all know, we as a community, we as a city, we don't do enough for folks with disabilities, and it's always a challenge, and it's something we always need to be better at, but I think everybody would agree, it's just always something that we can be better at. And to do it, you have to have a real heart, compassion to do it. I mean, that's something I'm saying, I know, I'm sure. So, we thank y'all, and all of the folks who come to y'all.
Thank you, it's an honor.
Thank you. All right, that was our last presentation. So, our next is public comment period time.
Halloween proclamation?
No, it's at the end. I'm going to do it at the end, thank you. Don't want to forget it at the end, though.
All right.
All right. So, this is a time where anybody from the audience can come up and speak for up to three minutes on anything that relates to the city of Goldsboro. I ask that you don't, election here, you don't campaign, you don't do stuff like that. I've got two competitors. Come on, Mr. Wright.
Martin.
Mr. Martin.
I mean, Martin, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I was very happy when I saw in the newspapers that the Paramount Theater was going to be used for a candidate forum, and I was happy because considering the $400,000 in losses last year, this looked like an opportunity to at least make some revenue from it. The organization that gave it was Liberty First, and I know, I knew nothing about Liberty First, and I, I'm an inquisitive person, so I did some research and could find very little about the organization. They did have a flyer that indicated they were nonpartisan, but when I looked and saw who the moderator was for this forum, I saw that it was the North Carolina Republican Majority Leader of the House. And that didn't bother me too much until I noted also that the host for the event was also a Republican. The timekeeper was also a Republican. And also, the moderator indicated when he came up that the organization is a conservative, an organization that advocates and supports conservative Christian values. And to me, it just didn't seem as if it was nonpartisan. It seemed as if there was a mission. But nevertheless, Representative Bell, as he explained the rules for the forum, he indicated there would be five questions that were going to be asked. He also asked if there were any questions that the audience wanted to give, and they had to be presented so that they could be screened to determine if they were appropriate. So, it wasn't exactly being able to ask questions that weren't being censored by the Republican Majority Leader in the House, which concerned me. But it was pointed out also that there were several missing people from this forum who didn't participate. And I later learned out from several of them that they had agreed to participate in the forum, but they found out before the forum that the questions had been leaked to the city. And they therefore were reluctant to appear, as I would be going into a situation like that. So, I just wanted to clarify that because I was asked and told that, you know, these candidates were just looking to avoid something. Well, I would be avoiding that also. Another thing that was brought up was the decisiveness of certain members of council. They're always fighting against us. Well, nothing seemed to have been mentioned, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm slightly, piggybacking off of what Mr. Martin was talking about, but for me, it is great concern that the Democratic Party actually held a forum, and as the Secretary of the Democratic Party, I did make a call, I do remember to Councilman Broadway, asking him if he was going to RSVP, and he mentioned that he is a Democrat. From my understanding, the mayor is also a recorded or registered Democrat. So, it was slightly disturbing that neither of you felt compelled enough to attend the Democratic Forum, but as Mr. Martin just mentioned, you've had no qualms in supporting the one that the Republican Party or the Liberty Party was giving. And then, on this past week, the Republican Party has put out a request to their registered Republicans to support you, and you're not standing up saying, "No, as a Democrat, I don't need your support. I know it's a nonpartisan election," but however, twice in the last two weeks. And so, we know that right now, in the time that we're in, it's easy to say we're Democrats so that we can get the black vote. But are we really Democrats? Because for us to have a forum sponsored by your party and for you to ignore us, but then you go to one that's sponsored by the opposite party, and you participate in that one, and then you're now being endorsed by that party, and you see no qualms to that? That bothers me as a citizen because I know for a fact, I know some people that have voted for you to be the mayor over the last few years because, or be even on the council, because even though it's a nonpartisan, they're assuming that your thought process is similar to theirs, and which obviously is not. And so, I just wanted to express that because I really think that, you know, did you even consider that? Did either one of you even consider that you have participated twice or once in that, and then you're okay with this endorsement? And do you think that's fair to your constituents? So, you're not going to give an answer to the citizens?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Wow. 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 Let me say that this is a difficult situation that we all find ourselves. Supposedly, we are people that want to do right, and supposedly, we are people that want to do right for the city. I ran across Councilman Acock a couple of times in passing. One of the things that Councilman Acock shared with me is that, over the past few years, he said that his interactions in city council has taken a toll on him physically. Now, some people will say, "Well, it's this certain group of people that's causing the problems." But I want us to also come to understand and look at it like this. Up until four years ago, and I'm not casting any aspersions or trying to denigrate anyone, but it was approximately four years ago that our mayor, Chuck Allen, became mayor, and we did not have these issues until then. What I'm saying is, leadership matters. Period. Point blank. And if you are not up to the call, and if you are not moral, and if you are not ethical, remove yourself from the equation. Another thing that I want to say is this right here, is that the election, and I'm not electioneering, is over November the 5th. The Attorney General will be here on November 7th. Some people say, "What is he coming for?" Years ago, we've heard what's been going on. Do you think that the tears of our people have gone and hurt? Judgment is coming. Scripture says something like this, "Oh, you generation of vipers, who has convinced you that you can escape the wrath to come." That's all I got, sir.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I just wanted to address, a couple of weeks ago, a young lady got punched by the sheriff department, and I know the sheriff is under the county commissioners, but I wanted to talk to them about the same thing. It actually happened to me by the Goldsboro Police Department 10 years ago, where Officer Powers came in my house, pulled guns on me. It also happened twice with the same officer. So, I'm here today to request again that we really look at our police mental health, we really look at how we can help our police with better community policing. We're not looking at this situation, that just happened with this young lady, as something we want to use to help the community. I see it as a sign for us to use it for the greater good and actually address some serious issues. And that serious issue is that we do have an abuse of power, we do have a lawsuit that is already pending against the department for what they did to the young man in 2017, where they hogtied him and beat him to death. So, as citizens, we want to start looking at issues that we can ensure that this won't go any further. We just had this situation in Texas with the young lady getting shot in her home. So, we want to be proactive as a community and see this as a sign for just start paying attention. Our officers need better pay, they need more mental health training, they need more time off the force. The officer was involved in three fights that night before he interacted with that lady. He was overworked, he was stressed, he was frustrated and tired. And I think we have to start looking at those issues seriously as a community, and we want to find solutions. We don't want to complain, we want to look at our nickel and nyste. We also want to learn how can we help train our youth in the community to how to interact with authority and the police better. So, we want real programs and real conversations with real people, so we don't want this to turn into something where it's a riot. We want to use this as something to bring us together because we know we do need our police, but we need them healthy. We know that police have the number one domestic violence, number one alcoholism, they're hurting too. So, as a community, let's find real solutions, define funding, and start helping our police officers be better police officers, hopefully get more people from our community to be police officers, and kind of dispel that stereotype so we can come together because this situation has gone too far at this point.
One of the things that Councilman Acock shared with me is that, over the past few years, he said that his interactions in city council has taken a toll on him physically. Now, some people will say, "Well, it's this certain group of people that's causing the problems." But I want us to also come to understand and look at it like this. Up until four years ago, and I'm not casting any aspersions or trying to denigrate anyone, but it was approximately four years ago that our mayor, Chuck Allen, became mayor, and we did not have these issues until then. What I'm saying is, leadership matters. Period. Point blank. And if you are not up to the call, and if you are not moral, and if you are not ethical, remove yourself from the equation. Another thing that I want to say is this right here, is that the election, and I'm not electioneering, is over November the fifth. The Attorney General will be here on November the seventh. Some people say, "What is it coming for?" Years ago, we've heard what's been going on. Do you think that the tears of our people have gone and hurt? Judgment is coming. Scripture says something like this, "Oh, you generation of vipers, who has convinced you that you can escape the wrath to come." That's all I got, sir.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I just wanted to address, a couple of weeks ago, a young lady got punched by the sheriff department, and I know the sheriff is under the county commissioners, but I wanted to talk to them about the same thing. It actually happened to me by the Goldsboro Police Department, ten years ago, where Officer Powers came in my house, pulled guns on me. It also happened twice with the same officer. So I'm here today to request again that we really look at our police mental health, we really look at how we can help our police with better community policing. We're not looking at this situation, that just happened with this young lady, as something we want to use to help the community. I see it as a sign for us to use it for the greater good and actually address some serious issues. And that serious issue is that we do have an abuse of power, we do have a lawsuit that is already pending against the department for what they did to the young man in two thousand seventeen, where he, they hogtied him and beat him to death. So as citizens, we want to start looking at issues that we can ensure that this won't go any further. We just had this situation in Texas with the young lady getting shot in her home. So we want to be proactive as a community and see this as a sign for to start paying attention. Our officers need better pay, they need more mental health training, they need more time off the force. The officer was involved in three fights that night before he interacted with that lady. He was overworked, he was stressed, he was frustrated and tired. And I think we have to start looking at those issues seriously as a community, and we want to find solutions. We don't want to complain, we want to look at our negligence. We also want to learn how can we help train our youth in the community to how to interact with authority and the police better. So we want real programs and real conversations with real people, so we don't want this to turn into something where it's a riot. We want to use this as something to bring us together, because we know we do need our police, but we need them healthy. We know that police have the number one domestic violence, number one alcoholism, they're hurting too. So as a community, let's find real solutions, define funding, and start helping our police officers be better police officers, hopefully get more people from our community to be police officers, and kind of dispel that stereotype so we can come together, because this situation has gone too far at this point, where we're having one of our youth, and let's focus on our youth this summer. Youth program is something that's very important, so with this new election and new year coming, let's really take the time to focus on our children, focus on our parents, and maybe this holiday season, let's not buy them presents, let's give them knowledge, let's give them time, let's give them education, let's really take the time to have those uncomfortable conversations to get some real solutions, because we're not here to fight, but we are here to get solutions. So just want to give you a daily reminder, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. First, let me apologize, I have a horrible, horrible cold. So my name is Jill Nielsen, and over fifty years ago, my family invested in the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County, with that being the Pizza Inn on Highway seventy. And a little over a year ago, my daughters and I decided to open a boutique, and the only place that we thought about, even considered, was downtown Goldsboro. We believe that we made the right decision then, and I'm hoping and praying, with a lot of prayers, that with the upcoming election, that we did make the right decision, and that we can remain in downtown Goldsboro. I'm a little nervous, honestly, from social media, from the news, of comments and things that I've heard about defunding the DGDC, or not investing in downtown Goldsboro. That's very concerning, as a business owner and as a citizen. I support Goldsboro with all my heart, and have, and always will, and I urge the current and new city officials to listen to their business constituents, and make sure that Goldsboro remains a viable place to open and to maintain a business. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak? See, now we'll close the public here, comment period, and we'll move to consent agenda.
Consent agenda items E through H are presented for council approval.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, items E through H.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor President Broadway?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes. Yes, all right, consent agenda is passed. Next, we have items requiring individual action, we have none. Next, we have city manager report?
Nothing to add, sir.
None? Okay. Next, we have mayor and council members. I do have a safety first on Halloween proclamation that I'm going to read, I hope, yeah, here's my glasses. All right. "It is a desire and responsibility of the city of Goldsboro to promote the safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. City council is concerned that our young citizens participate in the traditional Halloween trick-or-treat activities in a safe and orderly manner. The city council feels that the best method promoting a safe and orderly Halloween is through proclamation from the mayor setting forth the guidelines for these activities. So therefore, I check out Mayor Sigel's on due hereby proclaim, safety first on Halloween, and encourage all our citizens to promote and observe the following safety guidelines. Whereat, parents are asked to supervise the Halloween trick-or-treat activities of their children, and to ensure that trick-or-treat activities are limited to children under sixteen years of age. Hours should be observed from six till eight P.M. on Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Residents who wish you participate in trick-or-treat are asked to leave a porch light on or other outdoor light during these hours so that folks know you're participating. Parents are asked to explain to children that homes with no outdoor light are not participating in trick-or-treat, and these homes shall be passed up. It is also recommended for safety to our children that parental supervision be extended to include insistence that children do not consume any treats until closely examined by their parents. Parents should follow, if in doubt, throw it out. If in doubt, throw it out. Where evidence of tampering with packaging or surface of consumable product exists. These guidelines are set forth in the hope that all citizens of Goldsboro enjoy a happy, safe, and orderly Halloween." All right. So we'll go to council member comments, council member William?
We were actually in a work session meeting, and it was a couple of things that I was uncertain of pertaining to Councilman Thorst that he was talking about, a supplement that was passed in July first. Can you elaborate a little bit on that, sir?
Yes, July first, two thousand eighteen, state legislative approved supplement for teachers, for schools, municipalities to give a supplement to schools inside the inner city. That supplement was brought to the board, and at that time was asked for a three percent supplement to, for our inner cities teachers, which would help our qualified teachers stay in Goldsboro. Right now, I think our supplement is around six percent. We get three, that'd be nine. A lot of, a lot of our teachers leave and go over to Johnson County, Wilson, or Lenore County because of the supplement. Now, with, with all those places, Goldsboro is ranked the worst as far as being in poverty. You can't change poverty without education, without quality education. We don't have quality teachers, qualified teachers, they can't teach our kids to get the education they need to get us out of poverty, hopefully in the future. So it was, it was, it was denied by this council, I think it was five-two, and a few citizens had asked me, kept saying to me, "Well, it was denied because it's, the legislature didn't approve it." But, you know, what I read earlier was from the school of government, it still stands as law, and it was approved, approved in two thousand eighteen for us to be able to do that. But we did not here on the city level, but, you know, that's it.
So I'm glad you clarified that. So I'd like to make the motion that we approve the teacher's stifle, the three percent that we are eligible to do.
I second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, everybody should raise your right hand. Pose likewise.
I'm so sure.
Anything else you...
Yes. I've been advocating for the bathrooms at H V Brown, and I'm glad to hear today that we have the permits available for that. So I look forward to seeing those bathrooms go up there, much needed in that particular area in District One. Thank you to the staff for allowing that to happen. That's all I have.
Captain Rowan?
I only have two things. I'd like to thank the DGDC and also the Art Committee for all the new statues in art downtown. I don't know that I really understand it, but it's something new. And the last thing is just, everybody vote. It doesn't matter who you're voting for, but vote, so you can get, get your voice out. That's all I have, sir.
Councilor Thorst?
No comment.
Councilor Hammond?
I want to add to comment that Councilman Broadway mentioned about voting. On Wednesday, we had rain, little chilly, had good turnout. On Thursday, we had some brisk winds, even better turnout Friday and Saturday, and today we've had good turnout. That says to me that the public is very interested in this election, and no matter what your ideology is, what, whoever you plan to vote for, the main thing is that you show up and vote. And I commend those that have come out and voted, and I appeal to those who haven't to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Acock?
Just talking about the school supplement. That law was passed for two charter schools in Huntersville, North Carolina. The North Carolina League of Municipalities have been trying ever since to get it rescinded. And, you know, it's not for any city schools or any other schools, it's just, it was just for those originally, and that was it. And the city council is not responsible for the funding of our, of our school system. That is the place of the state and the county.
Any other comments?
You laugh all you want to.
Any other comments?
No.
All right. We thank everybody for coming, we stand adjourned.